Good morning. Welcome to the July 26th Plaster County Board, uh, Plaster County Planning Commission Meeting.
Did you want to elevate yourself to the board supervisor?
That's right, sorry, sorry. Will you please stand and join me in the place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, Sue, could you do the roll call, please?
Yeah, yes. Uh, Mr. Howgie.
Here.
Mr. Hersog.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Rokuchi.
Here.
Mr. Sevison.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Yes, we are.
Yes, we're happy to have you. And Mr. Nader.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, EJ.
Hopefully your sound will come on in a minute.
I can talk louder, so. So, uh, just so everybody knows, we're in the, we got the big room opened up today because we're doing a live video feed to our Tahoe office. So if you can see all the way in the back.
We now actually have somebody in the room.
Someone is walked in up there, so I want to welcome who, who is up there. Uh, you know, hopefully over the next year when we do the upgrades to the hearing room, we'll, we'll have, uh, better, uh, will be, how would I say it, better legally, uh, versed for all this, so, uh, anyway, that's what we have today, so they can, uh, partake in this. Uh, let's see, I don't have anything to report from Tuesday's board meeting up in Tahoe. I was not there, but I know there was some few, a few good items on there, so maybe worth taking a look at. Uh, I just can't report on that. And then, the only other thing I have today is our upcoming schedules. Uh, the next two planning commissions scheduled, uh, we plan to hold one in August 9th, which is going to be in Auburn. Uh, I will not be at that meeting. Crystal Jacobson will be filling in for me that day. Uh, the only item, which is a, a pretty good item on that agenda, is an update on the Plaster County Conservation Plan. Uh, this is an update prior to the release of the EIR, EIS, that's going to be going out in a, hopefully in the next couple of months, at which time we'll also have a draft EIR hearing to accept public comments. But the August 9th meeting is just going to be an update. And then, the following meeting in August is August 23rd. Uh, looks right now like we're going to be down here in Auburn. Uh, I think we have at least five extensions of times on different projects that we're going to bring forward, uh, and there may be some other items as well. Uh, so, that is my quick report this morning. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you, EJ. Any questions for EJ?
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now's the time for public comment on any item that is not on our agenda. I would ask that you hold your comments to three minutes on this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Garabedian for Plaster Group Sierra Club, although also on the zoning aspect of this, the TPZ Friends of the North Fork is concerned. I'm, I'm here to mention that last week, the zoning administrator approved a minor use permit, uh, and variance for a caretaker, a TPZ caretaker residence. The residence is over fi- 3,000 square feet, and add the garage, it's over 4,000 square feet. A, a serious concern, uh, our concerns that we filed shortly before the meeting have not been responded to, and I was just talking to Mr. Dobbs, who is, does intend to, to respond to that. Uh, it's just a, this, this size caretaker residence on a 66-acre parcel, paying 100, about $107 a year on property taxes, is just, it's out of, it's inconsistent with the, the Constitution. Um, and, uh, it's an attack, basically, on our TPZ program. And also reflect, you know, we've been through the, the, uh, the Gillis Ridge, that was the camel's hump, uh, caretaker cottage issue, hard, hard fought out to, I guess it was 1,800 feet, too big as far as we, we were concerned, but still that issue was, was raised and addressed. So, um, we're really concerned about allowing a tax, you know, we, we allow taxation on these properties under the Constitution. That's what permits it to be taxed so little for forced value. And then, everybody else in the county that has development potential is paying their fair, their fair share, but not these people who are now talking about a huge house for, for 10 people. Um, so, uh, the, the, there was a, a neighbor was, was opposed there, representing a couple of people, and there was a, a neighbor in support. And we just feel it's really critical that you know this issue is there, and, and are, are serious concerned about it.
You're not planning on appealing it?
Uh, the appeal deadline is Monday. That's as much as I know at this point.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, public comment? Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll move on to our consent agenda, and we've got a little bit of a change on that. Oh, sorry. Public comment or related to the consent? Okay, sorry.
Sorry, I was a little slow getting up here with the baby. Um, I just wanted to state my opposition to the parking lot you guys are going to be putting in, or hoping to put in, at Bell Road. It's going to cause a lot of danger on the road. Um, I came here today with my six-month-old, and I have, drive on that Bell Road every day, and there's been days, I've seen cars in the ditch swerving from, um, people coming out of their homes. And so I don't know how that's going to work with that many horse trailers and that many cars. And so, just for safety concerns, for one, for one major reason, that, um, I would like to state my opposition.
There will be, uh, public hearings on that. I'm not sure if it's coming for the Planning Commission, or whether it'll be another venue that they will do it, but they will be noticing, uh, certainly the property owners immediately impacted by that, to be able to give input into this process.
Okay.
Which will be lengthy.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that that was known.
Sure, appreciate your comment.
Could I get your name, please?
Yes, Lindy Ma.
Anyone else? I don't want to rush the process. Okay, all right. Thank you. Again, we'll go to the consent agenda. Um, we're going to have to change this a little bit. We can't do this as, as one, uh, for the three items. We're going to break each one of them down. And, uh, the first one, A, uh, the reason that that was continued from the last meeting was that, uh, we didn't have Mr. Sevison here, uh, to help vote on that one, because there was only four of us that attended that meeting, and to approve the minutes, we needed, uh, the four present from that meeting, which are now here today. So, uh, I would ask that one of the four, um, make a, uh, some sort of a decision on that, if there's some changes you'd like on it.
Before you do that, Chairman, should we just make sure no one wants to pull any of these items off the consent agenda?
Oh, yeah, certainly can do that. Yeah. Uh, is there any of the Commissioners first I want to ask, who would like to have any of the consent items pulled for discussion? Not seeing any, anybody in front of the public that wants any item pulled for discussion. Okay, I don't see any. Okay, go back to, uh, dealing with, uh, our first item, A.
Mr. Chairman, if you're looking for a motion, I would make a motion that we approve item A on the consent agenda, as in the report.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, roll call.
I have a first from Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Sevison. Mr. Howgie.
Abstained.
They can't vote on that, I guess.
I'm sorry.
All abstained.
That's right.
Just the four of us from that, Richard, Jeff, Larry, and myself can vote on it.
So that's...
Just four of us.
Richard, Mr. Johnson.
Well, I can't vote on that.
Mr. Rokuchi.
Yes, I can.
Mr. Sevison.
I'm not sure. Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
And Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we'll, uh, go to B, which, uh, let's see, who can't, some of you were not here for that, uh, our last meeting, so some of you cannot vote on that. I guess it was Mr. Howgie and Mr. Jeff. Let's see, who was not here? Oops, I'm looking at the wrong date, sorry. Who's, uh, was everybody here last?
I believe it's just Commissioners Sevison. Only one.
Okay, uh, was everybody here for?
No, Mr. Sevison was not here.
Oh, that's right, Larry didn't make that. That's right, okay, sorry. Okay, so everybody but Larry can vote on this one.
I'd make a motion to approve the, um, action items from July 12th, 2018, Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, please.
I have a first by Mr. Howgie and a second by Mr. Hersog, so Mr. Howgie.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
And Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now the last part of that is, uh, an extension of time, uh, for the flyer up at the North Star, so, um, somebody want to make, uh, a motion on that?
I'll make the motion that we approve it on the consent agenda, the flyer at North Star.
Thank you, Rich. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, spend a second, and roll call.
I have a first by Mr. Johnson and a second by Mr. Moss, so Mr. Howgie.
I have to recuse myself, um, as our company works for Vale Corporation.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item. Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan Amendment to Land Use.
Sue, does, um, Jeremy pull out mine, or do I just scroll through? This looks like it's the...
Yeah.
Just scroll through? Hmm, okay, thank you. Uh, Jennifer Bias, Planning Services Division here to present this item today. Um, and we're here for your recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on what staff considers a cleanup to the Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan. And the cleanup's pretty simple. We're putting some designations on the map for two of our approved specific plans, Placer Vineyards and Riolo Vineyards, Riolo Vineyard. And also, um, taking the opportunity to ensure that the community plan references the development standards for both of those planning areas as the appropriate land uses and development standards and design guidelines. So, the Dry Creek, West Placer Dry Creek Community Plan is, uh, 9,200 acres. Most of you are familiar with this area, the north baseline road, east city of Roseville, south Sacramento County, and of course to the west Sutter County. So, all of the colored areas on this exhibit are the approved community plan. Um, and so what we're changing about this exhibit are the blue areas. So we're designating the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan, which is all this light blue area, as the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan. Currently, it's designated as the West Placer Specific Plan. And we're also designating our Riolo Vineyard Specific Plan, which is shown in the lighter teal blue, as the Riolo Vineyard Specific Plan area. Currently, right now, the designations in there are, um, similar to what you would see in the other community plan, low densities with PDs, open space, um, all of which were found consistent when the specific plan was approved. We're just, um, making this adjustment, so when people come in and inquire about the areas, they'll be pointed to the correct and appropriate documents, which are the specific plans for any kind of land use and development standards in there. And also in addition, again, for the development standards, we're adjusting, um, Exhibit 1 of Resolution 49238 to point to the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan. Um, mostly, there was a couple items of that resolutions that we left in place. Um, and, these actions here today were both part of the certified EIR, so that went forward with each of the approvals for these projects, respectively, that was in 2007 and 2009. Um, there have been, um, addendums that have come forward and now part of the entire administrative record for CEQA for both of these projects. But for this action today, we are considering those previous documents as our CEQA compliance. Um, and also, this item did go to the West Placer MAC as an action item. There was some discussion in the community, most of the community discussion was on these colored areas still on the maps, um, with projects that are going on out there. We are not changing any of the colors on the maps or any of the designations for that area with this action. And there's also some discussions about the SPA area in Vineyards, which is roughly this area located on the western side of the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan, and whether that should be included or not. Um, staff's recommendation was it's already included as the West Placer Specific Plan, so it's incorporated into the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan. Ultimately, the MAC voted to approve, recommend approval on this item. Um, we have received public comment. Um, the Planning Commission has a copy of the public comment from Michael Garabedian with the Sierra Club, expressing concerns on the rail yards and air quality concerns. Um, again, staff's position is that this action is based on the previously certified EIRs. There's, those EIRs are referenced in the staff report, and you'll make a finding, or the Board of Supervisors will ultimately make a finding certifying that this action's consistent with that. With that, um, I'll take any questions?
Any questions for Jennifer?
Let's see. Embassy, last, uh, meeting, we, uh, heard a proposal from Mill Creek. And, you know, I can't remember for sure if there was any zoning changes in that. Yeah, maybe you can answer that question?
So, yeah, my understanding of the last meeting was a, um, actual public comment on the EIR.
Right.
Um, but the proposed project description does include an amendment to this community plan to change the desi- current designation in the community plan on that piece of property to match what is being proposed with the development.
Okay, so we won't have to go through this again, then?
You will have to, you will have to go through, with that project, we'll have to come forward and be considered on its own merits. This project is merely an exercise to paint our specific plan areas and depict them on a community plan, to show and direct people to the appropriate planning documents. Any other community plan amendments that are adjusting densities, changing uses, have to come forward with the environmental review and appropriate actions, your recommendation, Board of Supervisors.
And then if we approve this particular action, and then those subsequent actions, if we approve them, we'll automatically amend this?
Right, and part of it was, is, again, the history of the Dry Creek 1990 plan, and then the 1994 West Placer Specific Plan Amendment. The mapping just didn't catch up digitally, and so if you go do an inquiry of, tell me what my land uses are on this parcel that's in the specific plan, it comes back as, um, not the correct designation. So, with this action, we're kind of implementing what the 1994 Specific Plan Amendment did, and then in 2007, again, they were consistent. It's just, this is really just an exercise to help us in our GIS program, uh, make sure people are getting pointed to the right documents.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, question, I just have a quick question, maybe it's more of a comment than a question. It said that, in the report here, it says the proposed amendment to those two says was contemplated when each specific plan was adopted in '07, '09. My question, I guess, is how come it took 10 years to get this action before us? I mean, is it, is that normal, or?
You know, I'm not sure in the '07, I was part of the '07 decisions, um, for at least Vineyards. Why, between the, the actual change on the map for this community plan happened in 1994 for Placer Vineyards, when it was designated as the West Placer Specific Plan? But like I said, when you go in and query our database, it just shows it as low-density residential with a DR, Development Reserve, on it, which is actually not correct. And so we just wanted to clean that up to make sure, I don't know why it didn't get cleaned up like that in '07. Um, my guess is that, again...
Was there any technical issues before?
None of the 1990 plan is digital. That could be part of it. I mean, when we went to update and create this map, they had to go in, the GIS department had to go in and, and create the map, and actually create, like, this is one of the community plans that actually designates things like fire stations and parks on the land use map, and we didn't have any of that digitized in a community plan diagram. So, we're literally working from the, you guys are all familiar with their document, from the 1990 version, paper version of this map, and it just wasn't correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Jennifer?
Yeah, I, I do, um, the Development Reserve designation, what is that? What would that allow?
The Development Reserve, um, is a special district, and I believe it is designated just for specific plans. Um, I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing our mining groups. Sometimes it has mining associated with it. But anyways, it's a special land use designation. Typically, it's used saying, any land use going on in this has to develop a specific plan first.
Okay.
So, like a use permit designation or combining zoning, you might say, the base is a commercial zoning, but you also have a combining use permit, which requires you to get a use permit. This has a base of, you have a residential zoning district, but you have a requirement before you develop with the residential use to develop and get an approved specific plan in this area.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, thank you, Jennifer. I may call you back up for questions later. I'll now open it for, uh, public comment. I would ask that you try to keep your comments to three minutes. I mean, I will obviously, uh, if it seems appropriate, give you additional time if you need it, so. Anyone would like to speak, uh, please step forward and give us your name.
Good morning. Mike Garabedian for Plaster Group Sierra Club. Uh, for 14 years, I personally, but both these groups, in different times, I've been bringing important conservation issues to your attention. Uh, this is one of the most serious environmental and public health problems that, that we've encountered, uh, one that's not recognized in the staff report, except to say that they about, talk about the EIR. Um, the, uh, the, it's not clear that there's any institutional memory, at least not applied here on this issue, uh, because it has been in the past. You have a copy of the B article from September 2008. Uh, I'll pan out the cover of the, um, the 2004 Air Resources Board Study. The, this, the, the study is rather thick, um, but I'd like you to at least see the cover, and you can access it online if you want. So, our, this is not a, um, it's, it's not that this problem doesn't exist, but there is, was no CC on the staff report to the, the, uh, Placer County Air Pollution Control District staffer who knows about this issue, mentioned in that article. Uh, we just don't know where the leadership is on this issue. Uh, there should be at least, there should be at least a referral to what, what the update is. You know, UP, I mean, the railroad should be up here, uh, talking about what's going, going on, what they're doing to update, what they talk about there and previously. Uh, we need a presentation of the APCD. These are things really, you need to know. We need data on the monitoring that's happened since then. Uh, the ARB, what the ARB is doing about this, they have a special program where they're looking at freight areas, uh, and trying to, looking about using state authority, and we need to know what Roseville's doing. The people there now and who are going to be affected by this development, if they move in, that need to have as part of your consideration, uh, what's, what's going on with this. Um, uh, just, uh, to a couple points in closing, uh, the staff says the EIR is being accepted, well, the EIR, there are, the fact that that, uh, there's, it's September 2008 was, was after, or after the, that EIR was certified. Um, but the point is, this is a matter of your public health, safety, and welfare discretion, whether it's covered by CEQA or not, or whether, it doesn't matter. This is, you have a duty, you shouldn't only do what you're absolutely told to do on CEQA. This is, this is part of your state police power that you have to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and let people know what's going on. It should be in the staff report, and there, there should be an update. And just, finally in closing, this is not the first public safety issue compromised in this area, uh, compromised here by not letting us know what's going on, compromised there when the, uh, the setbacks that were in the original Placer Vineyards from the power lines because of electromagnetic fields, uh, that was changed. It's changed after the mitigation monitoring standards and, and required monitoring that we support, the Sierra Club supports that, and the, and the county has changed them to, uh, allow people to, who, who should probably, would not, I, if I were you, if I was my family, I wouldn't want to move into an area where these fields affect our cellular structure. You can look and see effect on the structure. It's not proven to be a health problem, but if, if you're, if you have a growing fetus in the family, or a baby home from the hospital, or an elderly person, or someone out of the hospital, you really don't want to be exposing them to that. So here are two cases, and we need to let you know about this, because we are going to tell other people about it, and we want you to know what we're going to say, that you're failing to do unless, unless you act on this. So you really should put this over and get that information before you, so you can know about that issue and get a concrete response to what's going on, so the people can know. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Garabedian.
Any questions?
Apparently not, thank you. Anyone else want to comment on this item? Okay, then I'll close the public comment part of that, bring it back to the Commission for your pleasure, whatever you would like to do.
I just, I'd like to, oh, excuse me.
Well, you're going to go ahead, go ahead.
I'd just make a comment. Yeah, I was familiar with this study, because I, I live just beyond the 500 parts per million, whatever the 500 there means, uh, but I moved into my home about, about a, a half a mile from the rail yard there in Roseville 45 years ago. Um, and, I know when I was on the city council down there, they, we did have, I think quarterly meetings with Union Pacific, but I think those have been discontinued, so I, just from a standpoint and supporting Mr. Garabedian, that I think that at least the city of Roseville should have, start having some quarterly meetings with Union Pacific, because they also were testing engines there, and they were going to have, um, collect the, the exhaust in this house. I'm not sure where that's at, but I think it's an important issue that, I'm not sure it, it's not covered in the EIR, and I agree with him on that point, but I think it's an issue that we do need to at least have the proper departments look into, because I think it is, it is an important, now that they're making more and more fuss about diesel soot. Before, they said that diesel fumes weren't harmful. Now, of course, they say it's more harmful than, than the gasoline fumes, but anyway. So, that's just my comment.
Might be helpful for the county to, if not participate in those discussions, uh, to just get the information that's coming back from UP on, uh, what they're doing. Oh, okay.
I guess I'd like to, uh, ask staff, or maybe our young lady here, that, uh, as far as a specific decision we're making today, and I think what Mr. Garabedian was bringing up is maybe some, uh, issues that may have not been fully developed in the past. We was talking about a relationship of a power line and, but as far as this specific decision we're making today, uh, where do things like that fit in?
So, a couple of things, um, the information that was provided, uh, recently on the rail yards, a couple of things to point out. The rail yards are within the city here, and a lot of what we are talking about, I believe, are even outside some of the areas that were identified in that article. I didn't have a whole lot of time to really dive into that, but when we started kind of talking about that, none of our land uses are changing in any of this. All of these land uses are already approved. The environmental documents certainly had access in, um, to the 2004 study, and subsequent addendums, um, have also been adopted with this project, these two specific plans. Um, so, you know, we're relying on the previously certified EIR for this action. And then for the power lines, um, that was, uh, an addendum that was done in 2016, and there was additional technical information after the EIR was certified. Um, that provided additional information on the power lines. And the Board of Supervisors held a public hearing, adopted an addendum, and took action to modify that mitigation measure. Actually, they just eliminated the mitigation measure based on the technical information that was presented. So all that information is part of the record and has been presented, so, for, for the Vineyards.
So, I, I think what you're saying is that, uh, you know, like, we could approve some projects in that area, and then, based on an EIR, that, that the time, we think, is complete, but then, if there are health and safety issues that come up later, then they can be dealt with, is that correct?
I'm going to put that over to, to county council, to...
Yeah, so, the question, uh, and the thing in front of the Commission today is the amendment to include the land use plan. That's a cleanup measure. The, uh, 2015 Supreme Court case of California Building Industry Association, or CBIA, basically says that the agency isn't required to analyze the impact of existing environmental conditions on a project's future users or residents. Um, what's been provided with respect to the rail yards isn't new significant information. The rail yards are an existing condition. Uh, the study that was referenced by Mr. Garabedian in his emails, a 2004 study, uh, that was available at the time of the, the EIRs in 2007 and 2009. So this is a, basically, an existing condition, and there hasn't been anything in, um, provided so far that indicates this is a new condition. Does that answer your question?
You said it's not, it's not a new condition. It's an existing condition?
Yes.
No, I didn't hear real completely there, but...
Sure, yeah. Uh, yes, it's a, it's an existing condition that was, um, in existence at the time of the 2007 and 2009 EIR approvals for these specific plans. So it's not a, uh, change condition that would impact the... that would impact the determination the commission makes today.
What about a health and safety issue, just, that comes up after a project's been put in play and is built, or whatever? You're talking about health and safety issues. How are those normally handled?
So, I guess it depends on the health and safety issue and the impact, and whether or not that is a changed circumstance that then would need to be evaluated. So, I guess it's kind of a specific inquiry.
I think the county would do that. So, I guess, I guess what I'm getting at, I'm trying to maybe answer Mr. Garabedian's response there, somehow by, you know, our job is to certify the environmental documentation, and pass certain ones off to the supervisor if it's a zoning change, that kind of stuff. But, that's what we deal with normally, if changes come up after the project is in play or built. And that's an issue that some, some other body in the county would deal with, other than the planning commission, or would we, if there's, how would we, how would we fit into that?
So, potentially, the planning commission would deal with that if it was a significant change that was different from what had been anticipated at the time of the original approvals.
Okay. So, that would come back to the planning commission then, to be dealt with?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Jennifer, I just want to make sure I'm not oversimplifying my thoughts on this, but really, all we're asking to do is take this one page, this diagram right here, and relabel a couple of items on it, to aid in disclosure to somebody making an inquiry of what's going to happen over here. They can know there's actually a specific land use plan for this area as opposed to just a future potential for a development.
Correct. And even though this has the term, you know, community plan amendment, we really kind of deem it as this is just a cleanup exercise.
But, no other documentation anywhere within the project is changing. No land use designations are changing. We're taking one exhibit of that whole package and relabeling it to, to better disclose what's going on in the future for somebody who brings this up and looks at it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other?
Make a motion if you want.
Any other questions? Motion? Well, I closed public comment, but since your name came up so much, I'll let you go back up.
Quite a personal privilege.
Well, just very briefly. CEQA is doing, well, let me put it this way. Doing the absolute minimum required by law is not governing. Every day, you make, in these projects, you make dozens, hundreds of decisions to do more than absolutely required by law. So, your discretion to, to bring this, bring up, bring this up at this point on CEQA is yours, and we would hope you would exercise it. But, the, but, we should not be, be asked to hide behind CEQA to not deal with the public health and safety issues that are there, and to get an update on that.
Thank you. I'll bring it back.
Mr. Chairman, if we're ready for a motion, I'd make one.
Go right ahead.
I recommend that the planning commission forward a recommendation to the board of supervisors to adopt a resolution amending the Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan Land Use Diagram has set forth an Attachment B of the staff report in reliance on the previously certified final environmental impact reports for the Placer Vineyards and Riola Vineyard specific plans, and based on the findings presented in the staff report.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, where did that second come from?
Larry.
Oh, Larry. Okay. Thank you. Sue?
I have a first by Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Severson. So, Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have more, or is that it? All right. Did that close out that item? Okay, then we'll move on to the chapter 17 zoning text amendment, zoning text amendment. I think we're going to hear from George.
We are going to do this like page by page?
Oh, no. We have days. No, we will not. So, gentlemen, my name is George Rososco. I'm the principal planner in charge of current planning. Welcome, Mr. Haugie. I've dealt with you a lot at the Meta Vista Mac, and welcome, Mr. Hersog. I've never actually met you, but welcome. So, we'll go ahead with the presentation, and if you have any questions, as always, feel free to stop me. So, with regard to background, the proposed Chapter 17 zoning text amendment, it starts in 2006. It's placed on hold due to economic downturn. We restarted it in 2017. At this point in time, we presented the proposed zoning text amendment to all 13 of the municipal advisory councils. Frankly, more than once, almost twice to all of them, and sometimes three times. We've also had a workshop before you on February 22nd, dealing with this zoning text amendment. Don't know what happened there. Sorry. So, these are the proposed changes to land use definitions. We're going to add a land use newsstands as in allowed use at airfields and airports. We're going to add a definition for ground-mounted residential solar electric generating systems. We have an addition of a street side which requires setback definitions to be revised. Update the definition of structure to match the current definition adopted in the Placer County Building Code. We added a definition of the highway plan and highway deficiency report. These have both been adopted by the board of supervisors, but have never been incorporated into the zoning ordinance. We use them a lot. They've been adopted since 1967, actually. We are dropping the definition for net lot area, so all lot sizes will be predicated on gross size, not a net size. We're adding a definition for travel-ready, which was at the request of code enforcement. So, when they go out and people are illegally camping in trailers, they have a definition that they can point at that, that says what is travel-ready and what is not travel-ready. We put a definition of nuisance into the land use definitions, and that's needed to go with the new nuisance abatement section. So, to implement these things, we proposed changes to the zone districts. 20 zone districts are proposed to be amended to reflect the addition of a street side setback. We've changed diagrams to reflect street side setbacks. This is the new diagram that will be in the zoning ordinance. So, just briefly, if you look at the cul-de-sac street, and you look at the two corner lots, the purple would be a street side, and the front setback would be the blue. Previously, the way we would have done that on a corner lot, you would have had a front setback all the way around, where the blue and purple is. Whereas, someone who only has one front, like, right next door, they would only have a setback from the actual street. Yeah. It's a little late now, so I'm, I'll do it next time. I, I need to. So, proposed changes to the zone district provides combining building site district to reflect addition to, of a street side. Move the 20-foot setback from the face of garage requirement to the design of parking section. Makes more sense there. The density limitation, more on that to come. That's hugely controversial. And the combining zone district section has been revised to simplify the tables showing minimum lot sizes for single-family and multifamily dwellings. The intent of the change to that was only to make it more user-friendly, never to increase density, never to change anything. But, we've gotten tons of comments, and there's some validity to the comments, and I might need to go back and, and switch that around a little bit to actually make it clearer. Change to the height measurement of a structure to be from approved grade, not natural grade. So, what happens now, our, our ordinance actually says that you measure the height from the natural grade. So, if it's part of a subdivision, you come in in pad grade as part of that subdivision, you don't measure from the pad. You measure from what the natural grade used to be. Very difficult to do. It actually works out, a lot of times, to allow people to go higher. We have a very large building in Granite Bay right now, that if you use that method of going from natural grade after they pad grade this building, it will actually allow them to be three or four feet higher than the height limit, because it's from natural grade, not from the padded, padded site. So, we're proposing that whatever's approved, when you build, that's where you measure a height from. We created one clear setback exception for fences, bare bins, snow tunnels, alleys, concrete flatwork, pump houses, bridges. These items previously were not grouped together. They were spread out through the ordinance. We've created a section to clarify requirements placed on structures that reduce setbacks. We have, as a matter of course, placed requirements when we have reduced setbacks on structures, especially in Tahoe, when they encroach closer to the street, with regard to hold harmless clauses for snow removal and that sort of thing. We're now talking about actually making those part of the ordinance. We've changed the interior setback section to reference current Placer County building codes and requirements instead of a version no longer used. We've, this is a big one. We've changed the cellular tower section to require at a minimum all cell towers obtained an administrative review permit that will require noticing to everyone within 300 feet. Currently, if there's a determination by staff that the tower's not visually obtrusive, we can issue administrative approval and not notice the surrounding property owners. That would change with this. We've added a ground-mounted solar section where none previously existed. We've revised the nuisance abatement section to create a nuisance abatement hearing officer in place of the planning commission, so you wouldn't have to hear nuisance abatements. Provide a hearing procedure as well as part of that section.
George, can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
I assume that, that nuisance abatement hearing officer will be somebody in planning currently. I, since you're the zoning administrator, it wouldn't be you. So, it won't be somebody in plan?
No. The code enforcement division, specifically the chief building official, Tim Wagner, he has an administrative hearing officer. He will go out and hire someone, most likely someone who is very well-versed in the abatement process, probably like an attorney, and they will be independent, and they will hear the nuisance abatement. I do not believe it will be like the zoning administrator or anything of that nature. It will be an independent person who's hired from the outside.
Okay, I have a question too on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, as far as having, at least as I read it, it, it has to be somebody that's got a, some kind of legal approval, and they have to be on a list of, that's in the county every year?
Well, I love our council. I believe it will probably be an attorney.
Yeah. Well, I thought it said they had to be attorney. So, that's, that's a good thing. It becomes mainly just a, like an administrative judge type
Yes.
role that's being played there. And that makes sense. I know in the past, it's been difficult, kind of a challenge for us to, after the administrative judge makes a decision to make a final decision when
Right.
they were the legal person and we're not.
For, for reference, the administrative hearing officer that they use now for citations, he is an attorney.
Okay.
So, I'm, I'm quite sure that the nuisance abatement hearing officer will probably be an attorney as well.
Okay. And so, that's a good definition, good change. Where I was really stumbling is on code violations.
Right.
And it, to me, when I read through it, it's, it's an internal function, and the planning commission doesn't have any involvement in code violations anymore.
Right now, the code violation process, if you get cited for, let's say, a violation of setbacks, and it doesn't rise to the level of a nuisance abatement, that goes through a citation process, and ultimately, if it's not resolved, it would go to an administrative hearing officer, which is in place now.
Okay.
So, code enforcement has two separate tracks. The administrative hearing process, and then the nuisance abatement process.
Hey, George.
Okay, I guess that answers it. What my concern was, is if, if some of those cases go where there's a lot of expense and challenge on the part of the person that's violated the code.
Yeah.
Then it seems like you'd want to have a, like, an administrative law judge or a planning commission of, of citizens hear it before they get a big expense. But, maybe you've addressed that. I don't know how you split the two out.
I, I think you would, you would be pleasantly surprised, and that's one of the reasons that they're going to hire someone from the outside that's not connected to the county. They will operate independently, and they will most likely be an attorney. I'm almost positive. And they will make a decision based on, on the facts without any bias, because, you know, they haven't been involved until that point, which I think is fair for everybody, frankly.
Okay. I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Yeah. Would we be part of the appeal process, or would we just be not involved with nuisance abatement anymore?
Here's the thing. I'm not totally positive on the nuisance abatement. Let me ask a question here. There's an attorney who wrote the nuisance abatement section.
Michael, you want to come up?
One quick question. Do you feel process after, no appeal process?
That's what I thought. There is no appeal. You wind up in Superior Court. So, you guys are totally out.
Are, and, go ahead. Are we anticipating a substantial increase in the number of these things? I mean, so far, I don't think it's been truly a, a burden on this body hearing the number we've heard. Are we, we looking forward to much more of these, or?
It has not. And, and one of the problems, the nuisance abatement process is reserved for the very worst offenders, because it is not easy to implement. There are huge amounts of noticing and huge amounts of steps you need to go through, and if you miss one, you have a problem. It doesn't work. So, code enforcement generally up to this point has done everything in their power to avoid going into the nuisance abatement hearing process. However, I will be frank with you. There are problems that code enforcement simply can't resolve. No matter how hard they've tried, they've done everything. They've tried to negotiate. They've tried to cite them. They've tried to do everything. So, for like that, 1% of the 1%, who we can't get a resolution, those are going to go to nuisance abatement. And when those things have to go to nuisance abatement, it needs to happen in a much more, I believe it will be a lot less cumbersome and a lot more quickly done with this new process and with a hearing officer, and will not involve the planning commission. Planning commission meets once a month. We can have the admin, the nuisance abatement hearing officer meet whenever we need to. So, I believe that's the, the thought process behind it.
And we don't get to hear any more cannabis issues?
No more cannabis, no more anything.
Fine with me, after the last experience.
So, is that on nuisance abatement? Yes.
George, I think if it's going to be turned over to a
Attorney-type person to process these claims.
I think it would be really helpful for a printout of the decisions they make and the basis they use to make it.
Oh, no. There will be a written decision issue.
So that we have reference of it as we go along as to whether or not it's being effective or not, you know?
So, you know, the administrative hearing officer right now that we use for citations, he actually independently gives a written decision to the person who was cited and sends a copy of that decision to the county as well. And he does that independent of the county. So, well, I'm assuming we will have something of the same with regard to the nuisance abatement process? Okay. So, these were things that were originally proposed as part of the zoning text amendment. They turned out to be very controversial, a lot of issues surrounding them. So, we decided to remove them, because there are things that we would like to move forward quickly. These are things that will either come forward in different zoning text amendments, or they will come back as standalone zoning text amendments sometime in the future. But, changed a lot coverage in plan development sections, in the plan development section of the zoning ordinance, that was removed. We had revised coverage limitations in the density limitation section, also removed. Use permit changes. We were proposing that as part of a minor use permit or conditional use permit in certain zone districts, that you would be able to modify the setbacks, depending on, on, on the project. Highly controversial. People wanted to set setbacks as part of the use permit process, so we removed that. Temporary outdoor events. We were proposing that the temporary outdoor event section be changed. Right now, you can, you can have two, three-day events if they're approved through the temporary outdoor event permit. What we were proposing that you be allowed to do is to take that six days and use it in any increment that you would like. Six one-day events, three two-day, day events, one three-day event, three one-day events. Any, any increment that you went through the process for, and we approved. Turned out to be very controversial. People were not comfortable with it, so we are taking that out of this zoning text amendment, and like I said... And like I said, that will either come forward with a different zoning text amendment or it will come forward as a standalone zoning text amendment. That takes us to the recommendation, which I'm not going to give to you yet. Um, I would like to go over what the MACs did with regard to this. It's in the staff report. Switching on my glasses. So the Granite Bay MAC, um, concurred with staff recommendations, but did not think any, uh, coverage changes should happen. So they voted on that unanimously, five zip. North Auburn unanimous, six zip to accept it as proposed. Weimar Applegate, um, approved the zoning text amendment with the provision that the parcels of our one acre or larger should not have a street side setback applied. So they went with approval of five zip. Newcastle Over approved as presented. North Tahoe, um, approved unanimously, seven zip, but they were considered about additional considerations should be given how height is measured and coverage. They weren't comfortable with some of the coverage things. Uh, Forso Forum approved as presented. Royal Lincoln approved as presented for one, with the exception that they didn't like the change to the temporary outdoor event section. Sheridan, uh, Sheridan, Donner Summit, Horseshoe Bar and West Placer, all unanimous approved as presented. Meadow Vista unanimous approval, five zip, with the caveat that they did not want the street side setback to apply in the Meadow Vista community plan area. Squaw Valley, we didn't get in action. They did not have a quorum. We did receive correspondence, which if it pleases the planning commission, I will go over with you right now. Or we can just kind of let it unfold as we move forward. It's your choice.
Thoughts on that? Now, that was given to us, right, George?
I believe that the correspondence was given to them, correction?
So we may have already had a chance to review that, but I'll ask the commission if they, how they would like to deal with it.
Oh, that wasn't what I was going to talk about.
Do we want George to go through this correspondence or are we comfortable that we've had a chance to review it?
Correspondence that was contained in our package.
Correct.
I don't think we need to have George read it to us.
All right.
I guess we're, good.
I believe we'll revisit it. There are some good, there are some very good comments that probably need to have a discussion about, but, um, we can take those as they come.
But there are some questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Since I was on the Meadow Vista MAC when we made the motion, and it was actually, the, the motion was not just the Meadow Vista plan, but all rural areas, that we felt that the side yard was a good idea since it's seen in a lot of communities. But in the rural areas, uh, moving those back to 10 feet and specifically looking in the Meadow Vista area, there's a lot of these lots, uh, that you could have that side yard moved to 10 feet with a fence or a building. And the thought was keep it rural and apply, uh, the side yard standards of 10 feet to the urban areas. And I know that isn't in here right now.
So I did make a concession.
Okay.
So the concession was.
Is this a concession or a confession?
Concession, never confessions. So the concession was, I went back and looked at the variances that we did since 2016. We've done 112 variances. About 26% of those dealt with multiple frontages on parcels. Okay, it's a lot. Of that 26%, to reduce that number, the 80%, so about 20, 21 of those, were applied for on parcels that are zoned 2.3 acres or less. Okay, so what I thought I would propose for street side setbacks is that street side setbacks only apply to parcels which are zoned 2.3 acres or less because that seems to be where the majority of those variances are being requested. Now, the next size parcel that you would likely have to deal with is 4.6 acres. That would have just setbacks as we apply them today. And then the next jump is 10. So if you want to capture a majority of the multiple frontage variances, it needs to be applied to, uh, 2.3 acres or lower. Parcels zoned 2.3 or lower.
Yeah, and again, you have a history of having the larger setbacks in these rural areas, basically the western slope. And just looking at the map around the Meadow Vista area, we have a lot of lots in the one acre size, uh, that are also have the situation for side yards. And it, it will change the character if persons decide to either build fences or to build buildings, uh, up to those setbacks. That's the concern.
It, it, it might. It, it might. And here's the thing. Most of the areas that these variances are occurring are areas I went back and looked. They, they're like Meadow Vista, Christian Valley, Loomis, Weimar Applegate, Penrin. Those areas that are what I call like semi-rural to somewhat rural. Because what happens is, and here's the problem that we bump into. People immediately jump to the thought process that if we allow someone to cite, and what we're talking about is citing a, a, a house anywhere from 10 feet to 25 foot differently on a piece of property depending on the size of your parcel and generally towards an easement. People immediately jump to the thought process that one, if you're allowed to do that, your house will grow in size. I don't believe that that's necessarily true. I believe that probably what will happen is that you will just have more flexibility with the house that you wanted and you'll move it around a little bit. Secondly, when you move towards a street, you know, it's moving towards an access easement. So it's not really that close to anyone at this point. So it's not really light air and open space. It could actually make things better. It could open up things like larger backyards. You know, more separation between the areas that people actually use that aren't roadways. So it's all speculative in my mind about how it would or wouldn't affect it. But there's the potential for it to change a little bit. There's also the potential for it to get much better. So that's kind of where I fall. I also, in, in fairness, if you, let me, let me give you an example. You live next door to someone who has a garage in the back. They have seven kids, five kids, four kids, whatever. They drive up and down that driveway 60 times a day. They go too fast, they're loud. You don't have a front setback from that because that's just a driveway. And let's say the driveway is 15 foot wide. Now, flash two, you live on that same parcel, but two elderly residents live in back. They drive up and down it two times a day. So four trips, slow, okay? But because that 15 foot roadway is used by two houses, you now don't have, let's say, a 30 foot setback. You have a 75 foot setback from the center line of that. So it pushes you back another 15 feet to 20 feet further than someone who lives next door to the really busy driveway. So it, it's not just a question of what it will change. It's a, it's a question of what's equitable. You know, in my mind, I deal with this all the time as a zoning administrator. And when someone comes in in a situation where you have, it's, you know, you have three fronts. It's a special circumstance. You know what I mean? And you wind up granting relief. So when you're doing, you know, 26% is dealing with one issue, you need to look at that issue and you need to do something about it. Because in my mind, we're not doing the public a favor here. I think we're doing them a disservice.
Mr. Chairman. Uh, Larry?
Yeah, somehow tied to this, and I'm dealing with it at TRPA now as well, is second units that are being proposed to overcome the labor problems and the housing issues that we have probably countywide. And I, and I think the more, more flexibility we can maintain through your approvals and so forth on a case by case basis, I think is critical. Because we're never gonna, we're never gonna meet the needs we have right now if we don't mill out with the way we adjudicate this stuff. Because for so long, it's been, it's single family residence and that's what it's going to stay. Well, it's not going to stay any longer. It's going to change. We're going to have permits. I think we're trying to sort out those that are doing it to just rent it on weekends to make a few bucks and those that really are renting it to verify people that need a place to live. So it's really a, a mix of issues right now that are tied to what George is saying, I think. And maybe I'm just seeing it wrong, but it, it does seem that we're going to have a lot of applications for secondary units. And tiny houses and different things. And so I think what you're talking about is very apropos.
Thank you. Anything else?
Well, I have just a question for you, George. You mentioned as you were going through the items that you'd had some input from people making comments and that you felt there were some good things that were brought up.
Right.
And that it was going to cause you to maybe look at tweaking some things.
Yes.
I guess my question is, uh, what is the timing of you kind of making whatever adjustments you think you're going to make? And then does it come back again to us?
It, it won't come back. I, I, none of the adjustments are, um, substantial in nature. The one, the one comment that I got in all the correspondence that caused me to pause was, it's from Larissa Berry. And she looked at the density limitation section and she sort of had a take on it that hadn't occurred to me with regard to the charts. And I was like, huh, okay, you could probably read it that way. Although I, that's not the intent. I don't think it is, uh, the way we would interpret it. But, I mean, you could, you could argue about it. So what I would do, because my intent was never to change the DL section. It was only to make it more, more user friendly. I think what I would probably do is simply just put it back in its original format with two charts and everything. So it's not really a change that would need to come back to you. It will just go back to the way it was in the, in our zoning ordinance as it exists today. It's kind of awkward. It's not super easy to use, but it eliminates any issues. So I would just put it back.
If the commission today advised you on an issue that they felt had some merit to change, how would you deal with that?
I would, I would, I would, I would probably go back and look at it. And if that was part of your recommendation to the board, I would change it. The other thing that I want you to be aware of is the version that we went out to the MAC is actually, it was a version that was user friendly. It's actually our zoning ordinance, the way it looks. And we made the changes in, in that version. Nothing has changed. The only thing that we have done with the version that's attached to your staff report is we put it in the actual code section because that's the way it has to go. That's actually the county code. When you look at our zoning ordinance, our zoning ordinance is a representation of county code, but it's not how county code is actually written. So at this point, it's time to put it into the actual county code format. Nothing has been changed other than subtractions. And, um, put it out now and then when we get to the board, it's not brand new.
So any comments that we received today from the public or any correspondence that we've received other than the one you referenced?
Yeah.
Unless the commission decides that there's some validity to it, there's not going to be any changes.
None. This is it. We're, we're here to get a recommendation to go to the board. And hopefully that will happen. And that's our recommendation, is that you find it statu- statutorily exempt from SEQA and that you, um, recommend that the ordinance be repealed. County council's recommended that the entire ordinance be, uh, repealed and then re-adopted with the changes because it's such a large zoning text amendment.
All right. Other questions for George?
I have a question just about the pad and the natural grade.
Yeah.
Are there instances where the pad is actually raised? And, and would that cause perhaps this new change to, to allow a house to be even higher in an unnatural way?
It could. I will tell you, in the 28 years that I've worked here, I have never seen a pad which would allow you to go higher than the natural grade. Because usually when you pad grade, it's because you're on a hill.
Yeah.
So you cut down, okay? And the way, when you're on a slope, if you build a house on a slope, you go to the midpoint of the grade and you go up, okay? So if the steeper the slope from the downside, the higher the house is going to be. So for instance, I'll give you an example. On a 20% slope, I just looked at a house like this. On a 20% slope, on the downside, the house is going to be about 40 feet from the bottom to the top. On the front side, when you stand in front on the street and look at it, it's going to be about 30. So that works out to meet the height limit of about 36 feet. So, no, I, I don't think your concern is, is, I, I guess it could happen. I've never seen it happen in 28 years.
Okay.
I guess, I guess, you know, uh, sometimes when they're putting into the roads in the cul-de-sac, you get out to the end of the cul-de-sac and they want the house to be at the same level as the road.
Right.
So that would be a case where they're doing a lot of fill on the slope to, uh, I mean, there could be some cases where that would come up, but it would, they would.
Like fill on the slope so it's level, so it goes up?
Well, they, they want to be on the same level as the road. And so you have a slope that goes down below the road at the end of a cul-de-sac. And I just wanted to bring that up to, that would be a case where the fill would, uh.
I've seen that, that scenario, I've seen happen a couple of times in Granite Bay.
Yeah.
One person had a 31 foot tall retaining wall where he retained the dirt because he was building like that. At that point, I don't really think it makes that much of a difference.
Yeah.
But it happens one in, one in 15,000.
Any other question or comment?
And I think I brought this up with you previously, but one of the things I noticed in here is you repeat the setback chart three times in the document. I know as a stu- and you do the same twice for the height limitation, uh, graphic. Personally, I like ordinances having just one graphic and referring to that just so that over time, you're not modifying one and forgetting to modi- modify another one.
Yeah, so you're saying don't, don't repeat graphics?
Don't repeat graphics.
Okay, yeah. I'll take that into account. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for George? Yeah, I'm going to open up to the public, but before we do that, I'd like to go over a couple of things. Obviously, we received correspondence from some of you and from others that may not be attending on items in this decision that we're going to make. So if you're, want to make a comment, if you're going to talk about it, I would ask that you maybe highlight the things that were in your correspondence. Obviously, George has had an opportunity to review those correspondence as well as the commission. So we're aware of your comments, so I would ask that you just highlight those things. And I understand that we have a lot of information here, a lot of potential issues that you may want to bring up. Uh, so I, I'm going to ask that you try to keep it to three minutes. I understand that may be unreasonable and I will allow you to go beyond the three minutes if it seems appropriate to do that. But I would ask you to be very focused on just hitting the high points of your comments. So I will now open it up to public comment.
Good morning. Marilyn Jasper, speaking on behalf of Sierra Club and Public Interest Coalition. And I'll try to keep it short.
Thank you.
First, we are asking that this item be continued and that a more detailed update such as this 97-page attachment that was created and distributed five months ago at the workshop, that has strikeouts and revisions really clear. We didn't get that for this, for, for the changes from today. The items that, the, the staff report that was posted for this was, was posted last week. Thus, we had very little time to sort, let alone make sense of all the changes that I somewhat went over in my letter to you, so I won't go over that again. But that's part of the reason for needing to continue this. We have a lot more investigation to do in terms of impacts and all kinds of things. We were pleased to see the amendments pulled that included, quote, "use permit changes." Those contained unacceptable loophole-laden language that went from required, which we want, to as determined by, that vagueness. And that, that, that has been pulled except for one. Maybe it was, maybe it was unintentionally omitted. was unintentionally omitted, but the neighborhood commercial is still in there. It's still in the SEQA-exempt category. If it was intentionally left in there, then there should be a note to that effect for transparency. Because the way the thing reads, it sounds like, oh, they were all taken out. No, they weren't. You had to look at each one. This entire proposal was ostensibly introduced to clarify and simplify implementation. We submit that clarifications could have been done more effectively with a brief explanation, or a description, and would have achieved the goal. These mass of amendments appear to have significant impacts, and not only create loopholes to existing beneficial codes, but they circumvent a more rigorous review that is required for general plan amendments, which some of these seem to be under the guise, seem to be general plan amendments under the guise of zoning text amendment. I have more, but I want to comment just on a few things. The permit time extension kind of relates back to this railroad thing. The new condition on the railroads is that people are discovering that these exhausts, these emissions, impact fetuses, older people, and children. We didn't know that 10 years ago. And the last part is on the setbacks. When you buy your land, if it's 2.3 acres, you know what those setbacks are. And you must adhere to them. Everybody, the neighbors all know that. I mean, it's kind of like Dolly Parton said, trying to stuff 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound sack. You can't do that. And with all respect to George, just say no. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, commissioners. My name's Lori Lewis, and I reside at Wise and Gold Hill. As some of you are aware, I've been involved with this for the last eight years. Some of you know my problem, and some are new to the board. I was glad to hear that the temporary outdoor permits were pulled. I think that was logical. So, let me start with, I need to ask all of you, if you read the document presented to you guys today, did you have a chance to review it? If you did, did you understand any of it? I tried to read it, but it lacked transparency. That gentleman is exactly what the planning department's intent is, an amendment that no one can understand but the author. It's a wish list with no definition. What I did gather from the document, that I could barely understand, was land use and elimination of environmental impact reports. That scared the heck out of me, because if they're going to waive it, if they're going to start waiving environmental impact reports on certain items, they're going to start chipping away at it all. ERAs are not a bad or evil thing. It makes the county accountable for new development. It protects my property values and my neighbors. When we start to eliminate the environmental impact, then we lose our urban lifestyle that so many people moved to Placer County for. I feel that the motive behind the zoning text amendment is the beginning to the end. When the county can use land use at will, with or without public consent, we have lost transparency in our local government. Please postpone your vote until the county can provide a document that we can all understand and agree on. This proposed ZTA is garbage, and it only benefits the county development department. As a footnote, in George's summary of this 94-page document that someone should understand, he simplifies it to say that it is to conform more closely to the current planning practices. It should actually read "current development practices." Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning. Larissa Berry with Defend Granite Bay. Obviously, I don't need to bring up the DL issues. I have two questions and two comments. I don't know if I direct them to you, or...
Direct them to, yes.
Okay. 1754-150, which regards water course setbacks for man-made canals. There is a proposal to reduce that to 50 feet. I'd like to know whether there has been sufficient data made available to determine that there are no water quality impacts. To the 17.58.160, the permit extension, is that for future forward projects? Or would this be retroactive to projects that were approved under a certain set of conditions at that time? And I agree with other comments that six years is too long. Environmental regulations do change. New information does become available, and it could have serious repercussions for the community. And then, the height limit exception, it appears, this is 1754.020, it appears to be an attempt to use the administrative review process to circumvent self-induced variances, and to circumvent equitable land use guaranteed to individuals under California Government zoning law 65-852, which guarantees uniform land use across a zoning district by providing special entitlements and selective enforcement. So, I feel that this should be polled, since it sets up the county for a liability issue. And if it will not be polled, I would recommend that, since Mr. Moss is currently involved in a legal issue regarding these matters, that he recuse himself from this vote. Thank you.
George, we don't just leave that hanging out there. Can you respond to the two questions that she had?
With regard to the water setback course exceptions and the height limit exceptions, those already exist. Those are already codified, okay? They exist as things that people can use under our administrative approval, relief from standards.
Yeah.
That's in the code today. It's been in the code 15, 20 years, maybe. I can't remember when it was adopted exactly. What happened is, I put a note, sort of like a directional note, in two sections, saying, if you're dealing with height or water courses, note, there's another section in the zoning ordinance that's already adopted, which I'm not making any changes to. It exists. I just put a note in that directs you to it. If that causes consternation, I'll take out the notes. Won't have any effect, other than, you know, lack of clarity when you're there, and not knowing to go back to the AA section.
Right.
But, that's what's happening there.
Yeah.
Was there a third question?
I think there was only two that she had.
Okay. Thank you.
In response to her...
There was the permit extension.
Oh, the permit extension, thank you.
Right.
Currently, subdivision maps are allowed, in the first approval period, three years and six years' worth of extensions. It creates a problem when you have permit processes that have different time limits. If you have a use permit on a planned development, it can go three and three. Three years first, three years' worth of extensions. Actual map can go three years and six years' worth of extensions. I understand that nine years is a long time for things to be extended. There's a couple of things going on here. One, every time you do an extension of time, you have the ability to recondition it to new standards. If things have changed so dramatically that this project isn't appropriate, you can deny the extension of time. Every time something comes back before us for an extension of time, technically, it's a hearing de novo, which is an attorney term for, it's a brand-new hearing. And it opens it up completely, and that gives you the ability to recondition, to do further environmental review if you so need to. It also gives you the ability to deny it. Now, as practice, if things haven't changed very much, and things are pretty much the same, generally, we don't go in depth. But, if things had changed dramatically, we could either deny it, or completely recondition it and look at it. So, that's why the extension of time thing does not give me pause at all.
George, I'm sorry. My question was about future forward or retroactive. That is my primary concern.
It's retroactive.
Okay.
So, everything that's in process now would have the ability to access those six years' worth of extensions.
All right. Any question on that? All right. Thank you, George.
Yep.
But, again, before we get too far away from her comments, county council, they threw out that Commissioner Moss should recuse himself on this issue. So, your thoughts on that?
I haven't seen anything that would require Commissioner Moss to recuse himself from this vote. I am very familiar with the lawsuit. And, yeah, I don't believe there's anything that would, that's occurring in the lawsuit that would require him to recuse himself for this.
Thank you, Clayton. Appreciate that. Okay. The next person?
Sam.
Thank you.
Good morning. I wanted to address what I consider a loophole in chapter, in the zoning code 1744-010, which allows residential care homes of seven or more with an MUP in RA zoning. Granite Bay is inundated with residential care facilities. They're basically commercial facilities. Granite Bay has over 2,500 acres of RA, which is .9 to 2.3, and we have over 3,000 acres zone RR 2.3 to 4.6. This is very attractive to developers, as residential is less expensive than commercial property. Zoning provides the opportunity to build large commercial institutions in low-density residential zoning. They're basically apartment buildings, and would not be allowed in residential zoning. We have one that's going to go through the process soon, that is, if approved, would have 164 residents in three stories with no medical care. It's basically a senior residential facility. We're a small community of 22,000, and we've had four large facilities approved, and this large one in the process. Many wondered why so many of these facilities are being proposed in Granite Bay. In checking with Roseville, the answer became apparent. These facilities are considered commercial use, and are only allowed in RS and RMU zone districts. Roseville's zoning ordinance regarding community care homes states that small, or six and fewer persons, and large, as no more than 12 persons, would be allowed in residential zone districts. Anything more than 12 is considered commercial, and only allowed in multi-family and residential zoned areas, as well as commercial zoning. So, I really think this is a loophole in the county ordinance that we need to update, because these facilities are becoming more and more popular, not for me, but for a lot of people, I guess. And I think we need to look at this part of our zoning allowed use in that district. And since we're doing an update, this would be a good time to do it. I also, this isn't related to that, but the secondary dwellings that Larry brought up, we don't get noticed on those. And I think that's a huge problem, especially when you live in an already-developed project that's large zoning. And we could have a lot of these things being proposed, and I would not get a notice that my neighbor was going to do this, that it would impact. So, those are just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. George, just a question on that. Because there is a difference between how Roseville looks at those facilities versus how the county looks at those facilities in the zoning, where it's allowed to be in the zoning. Was there any consideration of that when you were reviewing that?
None.
None?
No. The issues that she brought up, they're all valid issues, and they're things that maybe we need to go back and look at. Have nothing to do with a ZTA today. Has nothing to do with care homes, other than there's an addition of a street-side setback in RA.
How would that be addressed? I mean, if it's a zoning issue, how would that be addressed?
You'd have to go back and look at it. You have to look at it in the context of the state law. Care homes have some protection, I believe, under state law, so you'd have to look at that first. Then, you'd have to go through and see what would be appropriate to regulate in residential, you know, agricultural property or not. You'd have to go back through the MACs, see what you get, go through the public vetting process. It would be long and involved. I don't actually know where it would fall.
Yeah. Because it would seem to me that if Roseville's looking at it, that it has to be zoned commercial for these types of facilities, but the Placer County takes a more liberal approach to the zoning.
We might be able to do something like that. I've just, frankly, I've never looked into it, so I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
Just for the commission's purpose, we are, you know, we have the housing and strategy development plan that is underway. And as part of that, there's going to be a much more comprehensive update of our zoning ordinance, much more exhaustive environmental review as part of that. And so, that might be a good time to take that up and look at that.
I think it would, it's, I think it causes a good question, especially since there's such a disparity between the city of Roseville and Granite Bay on that issue. That's my own personal opinion.
Yep. Something we can definitely take a look at.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else would like to make a comment?
My name is Sherri Musgrove. I'm a resident of Granite Bay. And I'd just like to follow up on what you said. And since George has indicated that he's going to be going back and taking a further look at some of those items that were left out today, I'd be really happy to hear the board, or the commission, to direct them to go ahead and add that issue of the residential care facilities into what they're looking at. Because I think that is really important.
Yeah. And as the planning director said, that is an issue that may be addressed coming forward, so...
Yeah, that's correct. Over, probably occur over the next year. And, you know, that's somewhat different, because now you're talking about, you know, what type of land uses are allowed in zone districts. And that requires more of an extensive analysis. And we are going to do that as part of that housing strategy and development plan.
How would that affect, then, projects that are in the works, if this is an unclear area about what the county may do in the future?
Well, until it's changed, it's what it's...
They would go ahead.
What the current process, approved policies.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sure.
Susan Ames. I live at the other corner of Wise and Gold Hill. And I know you've seen me here before, over the years. I wasn't going to speak today, because I've become more and more frustrated trying to bring the issues forward. I've written letters that aren't addressed. I've asked questions that don't get answered. But, I heard a couple things today that disturbed me. One is the comment that there are no complaints about this or that or the other issues. There are complaints. I bring a lot of them. I know other people who do. One area now, we can't complain, because they closed down the code enforcement hotline. So, there, what do you do? I've talked to people who would like to complain about issues, land use issues, which are changing faster than I like to see it. And they don't even know where to go. So, we've got to get a little bit more information to you or to whoever needs to get it, because there are complaints. The second thing is, I would urge you to, to please delay the vote. All of us have been trying to make sense of all this, plus running the rest of our lives. And I can't decipher half of it myself. Another thing that I've noticed before that would be helpful is, if you change the definition of something, like a nuisance, can you put the definition in there? It doesn't help me if it says we're changing the definition of this, that, or the other thing. I don't know what the old one was. I don't know what the new one is. That would simplify things for us to try and understand all this. Mostly, my impression, sadly, is that those of us who come with concerns, and aren't part of the, I'll call them special interests, that seem to be having a lot of influence, we get patted on the head, we get a little smoke and mirrors from somebody. I spoke before to supervisors, and someone was up texting on his phone. I urge you, please, this is so important, to listen to what we have to say, even though there isn't people out picketing in the front. I think it's going to come back and bite us all if we don't take a little more concern at this point. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm a little concerned about something that you did bring up, about the hotline for code enforcement that is not operating. I'm a little surprised if that's the case. I know that's not on subject here, but I just want to get some clarification that if there are complaints, that people have an avenue to make that known. So, somebody want to address that?
Yeah, I don't know, if George knows any more than I do. I'm not aware of that. But, I know, you know, as far as a code complaint with our code compliance division, you can still file a complaint. But, as far as the hotline, do you know, have an update?
The hotline, they did discontinue the weekend hotline.
They did discontinue?
They did. Yeah. Code enforcement made the decision to discontinue that.
That's interesting. Okay.
I think that was something that was kind of promised, the residents in the area, that they would have a mode to register a complaint.
And hopefully, have it responded to while it was actually had.
and hopefully have it responded to while it was actually happening.
Yeah, I, I don't exactly know, I have an inkling of why it was discontinued. I, I would not comment on that, because it's not some decision that I was involved in, and I, you would, I would have to direct you to the, to Tim Wagner, who's in charge of the code enforcement division, who ultimately made the decision for his reasons, but it's not something that I'm involved with. It's not part of the planning services divisions.
Part of the reason why that's a concern for me is, as we think about nuisance, nuisance abatement shifting to more in line with code enforcement, we would hope that that wouldn't continue, and so that, that, that does bring up an issue for what we're dealing with right now.
And this went back to the wineries and event centers and so forth when those hearings were going on, and, and I think it was, was a critical part of getting some people on board with it, as far as having them ability to register a complaint and not have to wait till Monday morning when the damage was already done, so to speak.
Yeah, and there was supposed to be a cellphone that was passed to somebody who was going to be working over the weekend for them to be able to take those calls, so that's a bit troubling if that's been decided to stop, so. Maybe we could ask that whoever's, obviously that's in Tim's area, that somebody respond to us so we know what's going on and the reasons why, because I think that's helpful. And I guess, EJ, I would ask you that the other comment that she made was about land use issues and that they may have. Who would you say is appropriate to bring those to in your department if they have a concern? How would you like that dealt with?
Yeah, I would-
Because they, they indicated that they felt like they were not getting a response, so.
Yeah, no, address any of those questions to me.
Okay. All right. I, I don't know, your, your mic was not on, so I want to make officially what you said.
Yeah, address those to me, and I can take care of those.
Okay, great. Thank you, EJ.
Mr. Nader, my only comment regarding the, the code where you can call in and file a complaint, that was shut down prior to the wine season, prior to the summer, and so we have no outlet now to file complaints. Although I must commend the code enforcement, I am finally actually getting some action from code enforcement, and they're actually going to come out and do a noise meter test at my house for the winery that I've had problems with for the last eight years. So I don't know who's doing it, but there's a fire under code enforcement, and I am greatly appreciated, because finally, after all of my public speaking and the hearings and the complaints, something's finally being done. So I am hopeful for that, but it's taken me eight years. So, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Verapedian.
Hi, I have a couple of personal comments to make, just first about CEQA, because it's being discussed. CEQA is a disclosure document. As you know, the purpose is to disclose to the public and future owners and developers what the impacts are that they're, they have to do with. It's only enforceable through litigation, of course, but we need it more than ever because of the fire dangers we have, the landslide dangers we, we see now, and the legislature's a little oblivious to this. So when it comes to accessory units or the zoning, you need to provide zoning that adequately protects rural areas. You know, just having a whole slew of secondary homes going into the very high fire hazards of areas is not a good idea. They're, they can be ministerial now, so I believe you do have the authority to adjust the zoning to indicate areas where they should not be. Look at that, and I've mentioned that before. And finally, rural, rural characteristics. The rural character is something that's been evolving for 100 years, and to start taking urban-type problems and applying them to rural areas is, is, is a change that is contrary to that experience. And we've, we've had rural development for, you know, 100, 100 years now. And the final point, it's getting, you know, the best places to build are built. It's getting harder and harder to find good places to build, easy places to build. Now they're more expensive, but also, there are more environmental issues, and I'm talking about, just, just talking about hazards alone is an issue, so, so we need that, and I'm glad to hear there's going to be some more attention to that in the future.
Thank you for your comments. Any, anyone else? Well, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission for discussion or action. Oh, Richard?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me see, I'm going to go back to code violation again, and I'm kind of looking here, trying to think through what my problem is. And so I might have you look at page 908 of our staff report, or the code. And on the lower right-hand corner is a number four, and I guess what I've been struggling with is how do you tell the difference between what would be a kind of minor code enforcement problem and a nuisance? And I don't know if that's spelled out very clearly in here, but where my problem lies is if somebody goes through the code violation process, which is internal in the county, and a decision by the chief building officials made, then the appeal apparently goes to the agency director. And I guess my question there is, why doesn't it go to the hearing officer? Because it seems like if that point, it's gone from a minor to a major situation that probably should be heard by a hearing officer.
We're conferring.
Huh?
I'm assuming we're going to hear from county council on this. Wait, are you comfortable with doing it, or do you want Michael to do it?
Well, I'll give it a shot. Michael can correct me if I'm wrong on anything. That section on page 908 has to do with the costs and the appeal process for the cost, which is different, different from the nuisance abatement appeal process.
Well, I guess, you know, a hearing officer deals with the nuisance abatement, and I'm presuming that a code violation is an internal process in the county. And so I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, at what level or who makes the decision that this, this should go to a hearing officer, a nuisance abatement?
So when does a code violation become a nuisance? Is that-
Yeah, yeah, because they're all, could be classified as nuisances, but at some point in time, you're talking about, you're getting to the point where you can't deal with it, and you need to-
Yes, I think it's appropriate, Michael, for you to speak to her.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Profanta, PD County Council. So typically, the way that code enforcement has been handling that issue is they start with a notice of violation or courtesy notice when a complaint is filed about some code violation. If the courtesy notice doesn't resolve it, then they go to notice of violation, and then I believe there's often a final notice of violation. And during that whole process, they're just basically trying to work it out with the property owner. There aren't any hearings of any sort at that point. If at the end of that process, they haven't been able to resolve the matter, then frequently they will use the administrative citation process, where they, you know, issue the property owner a citation. Typically, the first one can be for, with a $100 fine or something of that nature. They can issue a second administrative citation, but whenever they issue the administrative citation, the way the code is right now, they already go before a hearing officer, and the hearing officer decides, was there in fact a violation as cited by the code enforcement officer? Should that $100 fine in fact be assessed on this person? So that's like the typically sort of the second prong approach to a code violation, and then typically the final step that you would pursue if you still haven't been able to get compliance is you would go the nuisance abatement route, which, as you all know, the way it's set up right now goes to the planning commission, and I believe can be appealed to the board. I have to check the code to make sure of that, but the idea would be to sort of have a, a consistent process with a hearing officer who handles administrative citations and nuisance abatement, and not sort of have various types of appeals, which at times are kind of odd, because they're limited to specific issues, right? So, you know, although cannabis is not actually affected by this because it's in chapter eight, you know, in, in the case of that appeal, it's limited to the amount of penalties. I believe actually that with the, the current administrative citation process, people have the right to appeal the amount of penalties to the planning commission, which is strange. It's, it's sort of, there's a way in which it's a little odd that you sort of have to accept the underlying decision, but you're only looking at the question of penalties. So it, I think the thinking here was, let's just try to establish a more consistent process, which is there's just a hearing officer, you know, and these issues go to the hearing officer, and then that's the end of it. Yes, Commissioner?
Earlier, I believe you said, though, that if, if, if somebody did disagree with the administrative hearing officer's decision, then it would have to be, it would have to go to, to the regular courts, correct?
That's correct. Well, the way that this is being proposed, they, they would have the opportunity to, to take the matter to court if they wanted to.
Would that be a, a civil court or a criminal court?
It would be civil.
Okay, so we're talking years?
You know, to my knowledge, normally when they're suing over something of this nature, I don't think that we'd be, I, I mean, I, I might defer to Clayton on that, since he has more experience in the litigation realm.
I would say most of these are resolved within a year or so. It does depend on each situation and how involved it is, all those kinds of things.
I guess I just am curious, because there was a, a comment made that, that coming before this commission wasn't necessarily a timely process. I think we move, I think we move a little faster than that.
I agree with that.
And-
Who said that?
And Commissioner Moss, you know, I mean, I think really part of it was also just to sort of standardize it, so that we don't have a hearing officer here for this type of matter, you know, with appeals up to this point, but only as to this issue. And in the other context, you know, we start with the planning commission and have an appeal to the board, and then in a totally different context, we've got a different process. You know, and just to basically have a hearing officer who, you know, specializes in looking at this type of issue, land use, code enforcement, is there a violation? And have that sort of, and then limit it, you know, to essentially that decision maker. But, you know, I did want to get back to Commissioner Johnson's other point, which was he was asking about that section where they talked about appeal to the chief building official and then to the, that, or and then to the agency director. That is only as to the amount of costs that are being charged to that person. So, at the end of the administrative citation process, code enforcement has the ability to say, we want to recover our enforcement costs from this person, because, you know, we already went through the notice of violation process and they didn't respond, and so then we had to go through this additional process with multiple site visits by a county code enforcement officer, multiple, maybe correspondence could have taken place, there may have been meetings, and, you know, the county believes that it's entitled at some point to recover some of those costs. So the idea would be a bill is sent to the property owner saying, you know, this is the amount that you owe in costs, and if they disagree with the amount of that bill, initially they can raise that with the chief building official and say, this is why I think this cost is wrong. You know, you build four hours here, I think it only should have been two hours. And then if, if they disagree with the chief building official's decision in that regard, they could file an appeal and have it heard by the agency director, sort of as a, as a final step in that process. But it, I want to be very clear that that appeal process or challenge process only relates to the costs that they're being billed for the county's time and, and resources, and it does not relate to whether they committed the violation or not, you know, which would be decided by the hearing officer.
Which could be a separate cost that the-
Yes, we could potentially recover the cost of the hearing officer as well, if-
No, I mean, as far as like, like in the marijuana thing, there was, there was an amount of money that the person was going to have to pay for each violation.
Well, you're, are you getting at the fine issue? Because there, yes, in the, in the cannabis context, it's important to understand that the fines are typically much larger than they are in the traditional land use connotation or context. You know, as I said, with the administrative citations, normally, you know, officers fine people $100. So, you know, the first administrative citation's $100, second can be 200, the third 500. So the fine amounts are actually not significant relative to the county costs, which could be, you know, a few thousand. And we do not recover, well, essentially, we, they would not be appealing, to my knowledge, the amount of the fines to the director. It would just be the county's costs. The fine amount would be set by the hearing officer. All they would be challenging, it's, it's to give them an avenue to say, you know what, I think you overstated, you know, the amount of time that you put into this case, or I disagree, I want you to justify this. You know, it's really, that's the only aspect of all that that is being appealed or being challenged, and we just wanted to get, we wanted to give that avenue to people so that they had some ability to question what costs, you know, we were saying were due.
Okay, well, I think I understand now. I guess, big issue I was thinking is, if a case really boils, boils over, you need to have a hearing officer hear it and not a, not a staff officer. You want it outside the county.
Yes, it, that's exactly right. And, and to get back to your earlier question, it would be a licensed attorney with at least five years of experience, you know, currently active and in good standing with California Bar. We currently have one hearing officer who handles the cannabis matters. We would likely be attempting to engage the services of additional hearing officers so that we have a range of people we could rotate, you know, and, and that way make sure that, you know, there's, there's a group, and, you know, there would be sort of a random way in which they were assigned, and it would be, you know, an extremely fair and impartial process to, to, to people who are, you know, alleged to have committed violations.
Michael, on the, the case that obviously came for us on a cannabis issue-
Yes.
It was a 32,200, I think, fine, I remember. My understanding is that the, the charge for the costs, if unpaid, can be a lien on the property.
Correct, that is correct.
The, the fine cannot be leaned against the property. That has to be dealt with in a legal matter. Is that correct?
That's correct. You know, there's, there's some gray area there, but we did think that that was the, that that was the more conservative and, and appropriate way to approach it, given the status of law as it is right now. You know, and, you know, the idea is, when the county liens property, that has priority over a lot of other liens, and so, you know, the idea is the county has priority with regard to recovering its costs, and then we pursue the fines through another mechanism or another avenue.
All right. Any other questions on this issue for Michael? Okay, thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I probably answer a question?
Well, you can direct it to us, and then, then Michael can answer.
At last month's code enforcement hearing, not this month, the proprietor, perpetrator, the hearing officer found in favor of the code enforcement, I'll say he- the hearing officer found in favor of the code enforcement, I'll say he, I didn't want to go that route, but anyway, he refuses to show up, pay fines, whatnot, and the hearing officer said, okay, we're going to turn this over to county council. This was June's hearing on a, it was a winery. If you don't know about it, then that's neither here nor there, but I hope it just isn't lost in the process. Okay, thank you.
All right, any questions for George or county council on this, or what action would you like to take?
I just have a question for George. Earlier, with some comment from the audience, and a comment said something about elimination of environmental impact reports requirements or...
No.
No.
This has nothing to do with that. There's no general plan amendment involved here. There's no, nothing affecting SEQA or environmental impact reports or NAGDAX. There's nothing in here that does anything with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think the question was more pointed towards, you know, there's changes that would take away the requirement for EIRs, that's nothing part of this ordinance.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with this.
Any project is still subject to SEQA.
Yes, okay.
Nate, go ahead.
Hi, George, just real simple question, and the changes in the language with the texts in terms of other setbacks, does this change improve safety?
Other set, what do you mean, other setback? Is that like the bare bins, storage?
Page four of the staff report, you'll see that there are bolded items with other setbacks. Just had a question about how safety is approached with determining those other setbacks.
Yeah, you know, here's the thing, like bare bins, snow tunnels, alleys, concrete flatwork, pump houses and bridges, those are things that, they have a set, like a pump house, you don't have a choice where that goes. The pump house goes over where the well is. And there's some question about, do you need a variance if your well actually winds up too close to a street and you need to put, you know, a cover so it doesn't freeze in the winter? As long as, so in my mind, there's no safety issue here.
Okay.
As long as it's less than 120 square feet and eight foot or lower, it's okay. Bare bins, they're a problem in Tahoe. Bare bins need to be located wherever they need to go. I'm not a bare bin expert, but they're just these steel boxes, and as long as they don't block site distance, they're not a problem. So nothing in here, in my mind, is a safety issue at all.
Okay.
It's just cleanup.
And a second question for chairman and the commission here, when we think about nuisance abatement, does that change our authority as a commission? Just wondering about, does that, does this text change, actually change our authority?
It does, it does some.
I believe so.
Yes, the amendment that's proposed would change the authority, would take the hearing of those nuisance abatements away from the planning commission and move them to an outside hearing officer.
Completely.
Okay, that, just as a personal comment, I guess, I do, I have somewhat of an issue with that. It's one of the newest members, I'm not sure how that change will affect what we do, but just a thought.
I guess I don't understand if we're not going to be involved in it, why are we hearing it now?
Yeah. Do you want to make that comment, Larry, or?
Well, it seems like a bit of a mystery if, why are we putting this proposition together here and now, when we're not going to administer it later?
It's part of the zoning text.
Well, it's because it's a change to the zoning rules, and so that's my perception. It's a change, so we got to look at the change and see if we're going to recommend it or not.
Okay. Jeff?
As a general comment on timing and action on this today, I realize this is a personal issue for me and my ability to have gone through as much of this, and I have been through it, but I wouldn't mind if, and I'm typically one who objects to kicking the can down the road.
Yes, I do.
It would not hurt my feelings at all if the other members of the commission agreed that we had a little more time to go through and digest the 300-plus pages of information that's been provided to us. I recognize that not all of it reflects changes, but as you try to read one section and see how it goes back and applies to another, there's a lot of information here to digest, and it's stuff that we as a body are going to have to live with for quite some time once it's in place and whatever form it becomes in place in.
Any other thoughts on that?
Well, I, I almost knocked over my water. I have a tendency to agree with Commissioner Moss. I hope your heart doesn't go batty again when I said that. Now, normally when we get a package of this kind, usually it's called an EIR, and we usually get it maybe, you know, a month ahead of time or six weeks ahead of time, so by the time it comes to us, we get to see it. I know not every page has changes on it, but I think Jeff's comments are appropriate, that we do need a little extra time to go through it, because when you get it last week, and here it's only about five days, and someone in the audience did make a comment, if we're able to get through it all, and I have to admit, no, I didn't get through it all. I tried to see what the staff summaries are and stuff like that, but it would be nice to have a little extra time on a document of this size.
Other thoughts on that? Want to see if we've got any consensus on that or not?
Well, I think we have had a previous hearing on it, and we've known us coming a lot of the problems that are being fixed. We've actually had a lot of variance requests and those types of things on them, and of course, we've had experience with the code enforcement part of it in the past. It hasn't been real frequently that it gets to our level, but it has been a few times, so, you know, I would like to probably study it a little bit more, but I don't know if this really represents something that new.
Would we change anything? EJ, a question for you. We only have one item, I believe, on our next agenda, is that correct?
We do, that's two weeks out, and, you know, that, I'm not sure that would give adequate time to go through, and, I mean, what I'm hearing is there's a possibility that the commission may seek a continuance, and if that's the case, what I would ask for is just a little bit more direction today, based on what we heard, if there's any other items that we should look at or remove, for instance, density limitation, DL, if, you know, so if we are going to continue it, I would probably want to get a little more direction on any specific items. We can make any revisions to, you know, to the ordinance and maybe schedule it like a month out from now, like the second meeting in August.
Well, I'm not sure that it's necessarily, there were comments, I think it was Nathan or Anders' comments about the multiple examples of grade that could go down to one, but I don't know how much change we're necessarily advocating, maybe just wanting to have a better handle on what the decision we're making today. And I think, I think we want to make sure we had a chance to flush this out as a commission, so I'm just, I think that's all we're really kind of asking for, so that we are feeling like we're better grounded in making our decision when we do make it. And that's true, that this is a fairly lengthy document, and we've only had the latest version of that for about a week or less than a week. So maybe there's more time as appropriate, but I'll leave that to the rest of the commission.
So we do have, you know, we have two meetings coming up, August 9th and August 23rd. They're both, I believe, are going to be down here in Auburn, so, you know, you would have either one of those to continue as far as noticing, as long as it's to, you know, a date and time certain.
On the 9th, what kind of agenda does our 9th look like?
The 9th, right now, we just have the update of the Placer County Consentation Plan.
I'm sorry, the following one.
And the following one, there's a lot of extensions of time, which are typically consent items, but I don't have any other major items on that agenda yet.
All right. Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, for me, an extra two weeks would be appreciated. Again, I don't want to see things delayed indefinitely and continually kicked down the road, but if after that, there is specific things that need to be addressed, we can still get to those in a timely fashion. But just to make sure I'm fully comprehending what it is I'm voting on, which I generally like to do, a little more time on this would be appreciated.
Okay, let, let me try to give you a little bit more of, I guess, I want to understand what, if we kick this down, if we use it as a continuance, is it necessary to go through the whole presentation again, or just view it as, you know, we're just picking up where we kind of left off, and if there is questions as it relates to more investigative, you know, more opportunity to review it, that we could just have George respond to those at that time and then make our decision at that time? I'm just, you know, I hate to have to go through the whole presentation again, if we can just...
No, we can certainly do that, have George just provide a brief presentation overview of, you know, what occurred at this meeting and maybe shed some light on some of the issues that were brought up. You did close the public hearing.
Right.
So I guess it would be up to the commission whether you were going to reopen that public hearing at the next, at the next meeting.
Right, yeah. Wouldn't necessarily have to do that if it's a continuance item.
If there's changes made, if there are changes made between...
Right. So I guess it's coming back to the commission, what we, you know, what do we want to do? And we do need to give some direction to staff as to what we want accomplished by this. George, go ahead.
The only thing that I would ask is if the DL section, that you give direction just to make it the way it is in the ordinance now. It essentially says what it says in the ordinance now, but I want to put it back to the original. Density Limitation Section, it's not in the recommendation.
Yeah.
That's the one thing that I was planning on changing.
So you're asking us to take action on that?
No, no, I'm asking you as, if you take a continuance, if you choose to do that, that you do that with the understanding that when I come back, the Density Limitation Section will be as it is in the zoning ordinance now, and it will be actually removed from this ZTA, because it, there won't be a change to it.
Okay.
So don't read that section, 740.
Okay. What section was that?
Density Limitation.
Oh, Density Limitation?
Yeah, we'll just put it back to the way it is in the current ordinance and be done.
Okay.
Okay. Seems easy enough. Okay, go ahead.
We need a motion.
Yeah, make a motion, let's see where it goes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we continue this item to, I guess, a date and time specific being, is it August 9th?
That'd be August 9th, and so I believe 10:05, we would just hear it as the first item.
At August 9th, 10:05, I would further move that we direct staff to remove the proposed updates to the Density Limitation Section and leave it as is in the current ordinance.
Does that work?
Yes.
With that?
Yes, thank you.
And will the, I guess the public participation would be discretionary and part of the department.
Correct.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, we're all called.
I have a first by Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Rokucci. Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rokucci?
Yes.
Mr. Sevison?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just to let you folks know, I'm not necessarily thinking about opening up the public comment again when we meet on this unless something significant comes up by one of the commission members. Because I value your time, and I don't want you to show up and then be frustrated.
We can still send you letters, though, right?
You can send us all the letters you want, and we'll be glad to review them, so. Thank you for attending.
So is that the meeting adjourned?
We are done. You want me to hit this? We're done.
Not that far.